Good evening, I'd like to call our school board business meeting to order. First, we're going to get started with a presentation of colors, but as we have the Granby High School NJROTC come in, just like to ask if everyone would take a moment to silence their cellphones. And other than that, we will proceed with the meeting and we will go forward with the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance. May bring the great members from Granby High School, if you please rise. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors, ready, cut, right, face, port, arms, forward, arch.
Once again, I'd like to thank the ladies and gentlemen from the Granby High School NJROTC for presenting the colors for us this evening. We're going to proceed right along with our agenda. First up, we have our superintendent's report, Dr. Boone.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and ladies and gentlemen, we find ourselves nearing the end of the school year and it's hard to believe that we're almost there. And what a very, very busy year we've had. Each month, as we've made it a practice, we provide, our communications department, Channel 47 puts together a great video to showcase some of the happenings in Norfolk Public Schools. So I would like to ask Channel 47 to present the video and for everyone to please pay attention and enjoy.
Virginia Governor Ralph Northam stopped by Norview High School during Teacher Appreciation Week. He began his visit by talking with educators about their concerns and expressing his gratitude to teachers for what they do on a daily basis. After the meeting, Governor Northam took on the role of teacher as he taught AP Biology and Anatomy students. The governor, who is a doctor by trade, spoke with these attentive students about the nervous system, physiology, and medical ethics.
We needed to review the nervous system with my students for their test on Monday, so it was perfect information. I loved that he brought ethics into it because that was, it's something we don't have time to touch on during the school year, but something that I like to do after testing is over, so it's something that was interesting.
I was really impressed with what they knew about anatomy and also about physiology, how electricity moves our bodies, but you know, then when we talked about ethics, I was always fascinated. They just hear where different people are coming from. And I think initially, they had some thoughts that after we talked about it, I think some of them changed their minds a little bit, so it was just a wonderful discussion. And it's all about being human and being empathic and understanding how other people feel, so it was a great discussion.
The lesson was very immersive and I learned a lot from it, and that sometimes ethics doesn't line up with law, and that it's understandable to know when it's good to be following the law and when it's to consider the family when doing certain procedures. And through the conversation, we talked a lot about how sometimes there's multiple options and they lead out different roads, so it's best to learn about all possible things and then that'll lead to the best conclusion.
I thought that was really interesting. I actually didn't know that that was something they taught in medical school, like in-depth, like a class. And it was really interesting to hear about the methods that they would use when someone's in a vegetative state. I actually didn't know anything about that, so that was really interesting.
I think it's so important because too often, we say politicians run for education and once they're elected, they run from it. Governor Northam has certainly done the opposite of that, that he's been here to demonstrate his passion for education. And not only for education itself, but the fact that education is the great equalizer and that our students can aspire to do whatever they can. And guess what? They are the future for taking care of this city, this Commonwealth, and this nation.
It's that time of year again when Norfolk Public Schools selects its district-wide Teacher of the Year. The finalists were narrowed down to the top three, one from each level of instruction: high school, middle school, and elementary school. This year's winner was Kelly Lowe from Poplar Hall's Elementary. Ms. Lowe is a first-grade teacher with nine years of teaching experience who is excited to be representing NPS and helping the district move forward.
It is a platform, a wonderful platform to be a voice for the teachers in Norfolk because we all do our best every day. We all love our kids every day. And I love where Norfolk Public Schools is going, and I want to be a part of the change, and I want to, you know, help everybody else be a part of the change as well because I know there's a lot of willing people who are ready.
Norfolk Public Schools recognized the Month of the Military Child by hosting a special event at Norview High School. Out in the Commons area, guests could enjoy the All-City Jazz Ensemble while looking at student artwork or visiting military-related vendor tables. During the program in the auditorium, several speakers talked about the strength of military-connected students and the importance of supporting them. But the highlights of the evening were the variety of student performances that included singing, instrumentals, theater enactments, and two drill team presentations.
It's tremendous. I think it's anything that we can do to remember and recognize the sacrifices of military families and what military students navigate as they go from school to school. And a school system like Norfolk who celebrates it, who draws attention to it, and makes students feel special, I think that's terrific.
There's a really close connection between Navy readiness, military readiness, and what the family does at home, you know? So without the family support at home, the military member is not focused when they're out, when they're deployed and they're doing the mission away from home. So there's a strong connection there, the Navy really recognizes that. So when the city and the school district recognizes this, it's wonderful. I think it's just fantastic.
Approximately 5,000 children in Norfolk Public Schools are connected to the military, and we need to celebrate them during the Month of the Military Child because of all of their sacrifices. Not only do their parents make sacrifices for our country, but they do as well, and we certainly want to acknowledge and celebrate that.
Military children experience so many moves throughout their lives that having deep roots and deep connections is tough for them. And being able to show them that while they're here in Norfolk, we care, we want to make sure we acknowledge the challenges and issues that they face, and at the end of the day, they do have a place to call home in Norfolk Public Schools.
Members of the Principals Preparation Program, or P3, attended their final session together in early May. This unique program is designed to prepare assistant principals for prominent leadership positions throughout the district.
High-performing organizations always think about succession planning and how do we build a bench for the future? Because that's how we get sustainability of the great progress, we get continuity of the vision and what happens. And so having this P3 Aspiring Principals Program was very important for us to begin to invest in those who could possibly be our next round of strong school administrators, school leaders, and it's really important for us to do that.
Today, they'll have the opportunity to sit with the appropriate director along with Dr. Rogers and possibly Dr. Cataldo. They're going to be talking about how the work we've done connects with the theory of action, they'll be talking about their individual leadership profiles, and learning things that they can continue to do so that they can move toward the path of the principalship.
This program allowed me to collaborate with colleagues who were also looking to move into principalships. We were able to interact with members of the district leadership team, we were able to have FaceTime with them to ask questions and to build our knowledge base in our toolboxes as far as how Norfolk Public Schools operate.
Well, the Principal Preparation Program, the P3 Program, has really gave me the opportunity to share my knowledge, not only to my colleagues, but to my executive directors and the district lead members from downtown, also learning from people that's already in the role of principals. They came and shared their first-year experiences, so giving us an upper hand on when we become principals in the future.
Norfolk Public Schools administrators, city officials, members of the military, and construction workers were all in attendance for the topping-off ceremony at Camp Ballon Elementary, the last of the five schools being built thanks to a public-private partnership. Attendees signed the ceremonial last beam and enjoyed a delicious lunch to celebrate this milestone.
This is going to be a wonderful school, the plans for this school are beautiful, and this shows us the cooperation that the military has with the city of Norfolk and the importance of the military to us. And so of course, to see this number of people come out indicates our great appreciation for the military families that we serve.
Totally different. Had to shape it around a little bit, has a lot of military standards in it, a few larger facilities in here that we had to work around, and a lot of protection things here because of the military kids that'll be here. So it is entirely different, and the government's been really good to work for, the federal government really stepped up to the plate and showed their energy and effort by putting their money up into this facility as well, so it's been great.
Well, Norfolk is, you know, has the largest naval base in the world, and we are co-dependent, we coexist with the military, so to have a school with the military parent and military child in mind is certainly important to the city as well as to the military.
What a great opportunity, this has been a long time coming. The partnership between the city of Norfolk and the Navy has been incredible, there were funds that were applied to this program. We have a lot of military-connected kids that attend the program here, so it's great that we're going to be able to provide an environment like this to help them with their educational process.
What started as a vision from Booker T. Washington High School's principal and senior class turned into reality. With help from the Norfolk Botanical Gardens, Booker T.'s courtyard has turned into a senior garden. To celebrate this occasion, the school had a ribbon-cutting ceremony and cookout. Joining the senior class for the celebration were members of previous BTW classes.
Well, I think the new courtyard is a good space for students to come out and eat and enjoy each other's company. Seeing how the colors came together, the color scheme, and watching transformation from how it was in the beginning, how nobody really came out here, how gray it was and how dark it was, and how we brightened it up and gave it a new feel and gave it a new light.
I think it's beautiful, it's a really peaceful place to just come and sit out and eat, nothing's going on in here. We worked really hard on it, we even growing food back here, it's really nice. But it's really nice to be able to get out and enjoy the weather, and even some classes, like the senior classes of course, can come and sit out here and have their classes, do their reading, so it's just a nice little area to come and breathe.
Approximately 400 NPS middle and high school students attended a healthcare expo at the Norfolk Scope. Dozens of representatives from groups including Centerra, Old Dominion, Norfolk State, and Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters were all on hand to talk with students about their futures in medicine. This unique opportunity enabled our students to get some hands-on experience with actual medical equipment and provided them with information about other medical fields they might be interested in.
This one right here with the ODU, looking at cells, trying to see if we can like spot cancer and stuff like that, which is pretty cool. And then the sports medicine back here, like the trainings and stuff like that, which is pretty nice and pretty cool.
I mean, just, it's furthering my education with my knowledge on which program I would want to go to, so it gave me more background knowledge on what I would want to do, and new opportunities I didn't know about, because I have things I didn't never know or knew before.
I actually want to do neurology, I want to start in biochemistry and finish in neurology in college, and this really is a lot of information, a lot of, they give you a lot of choices as to what you can do after high school to start pursuing whatever you want to do.
St. Helena Elementary welcomed their partners from ADP for a morning of fun as they learned more about coding and robotics. ADP, a business solution firm located in Norfolk, sent several representatives to assist students with basic coding and showed them how coding works with robotics. The goal is to get students involved early in computer science and create excitement that could lead to possible futures in coding.
So what we're doing is we're teaching them a coding program on code.org, so we're going through the basics of, you know, how do you write code, how do you make the step, and then we basically put it into real life and say, hey, you just did Java. Oh, they're loving it, they're having such a great time, they're really getting involved, and then when they hit a roadblock, they go back and they work out, so they're really figuring it out, it's just really cool.
It was a blast, it was awesome to see some of our kids from summer school last year remember what we taught them. And honestly, I look forward to seeing the partnership with ADP grow to where we can maybe have some coding clubs and have kids understand Scratch and Scratch Junior, because we really do believe that these skills and tools will help them have a different college and career path.
Students at the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood got to explore different worlds and a variety of subjects in a unique way, thanks to technology provided by Google. Cellphones on selfie sticks were used by the students to facilitate an augmented reality where students were able to look at places, people, and things in three dimensions.
We are doing Google Pioneer, several people have heard about Google Expeditions. This takes it one step further where the teacher gets to lead a lesson, and you can hear the excitement behind me, and she, they're, right now they're exploring ancient Rome, they're looking at Cleopatra, they've looked at a Roman ship, and they get to tour and walk through the ship in exciting ways, and they have been so excited about this, it's crazy.
So the kids were actually really engaged with this process, and it really brings it to life for them. So instead of sitting and reading a textbook, they're getting hands-on experience with the augmented reality, so they get to see what the ship was like, and they can zoom in, they can see the oars and the caverns that people used. And then for the Colosseum, they can actually go and analyze the arches and talk about the types of architecture that have been used in building that structure.
I like it better this way because you can like move it around and stuff. Besides just turning, like looking in the book and reading it, you could like explore it.
I think it helps me learn better because if somebody asks me what are some details in it, I'll know because I get to look inside of the architecture, and if I look in a book, it'll just like show the sides of it, so that's better.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV47 or the NPS website.
As you can see, we've been having very busy and exciting times in our schools and really working very closely with our community and strengthening our community connections for success. Just wanted to share, extend just a moment in terms of the coding work that you saw at St. Helena. As you're aware, we have a couple of Department of Defense Education Activity Grants that support our military families, and we kicked off some of that work back in the fall with a coding night at Slover Library. And that's the focus of one of the goals, so each of the seven or eight schools that are connected with that hosted family code nights. By the end of this year, we would have had about 400 families in those schools participating in the family code nights. But what you may have seen in schools beyond the grant schools, that has really taken on, and many of the schools are hosting family code nights, and so it's been introduced and accessible at all of our K5 schools, and we look forward to continuing that more in the future. We've also done, through those grants, 23 school field trips focusing on STEM activities, college and career readiness, and student team building around anti-bullying. One of those grants talks about building relationships and sharing within the, for military children, as they have so many moves, and so how do you help support and transition them? So just wanted to share a little bit about what's still going on with those grants and how it's connected. And then I'll just do one commercial. Norfolk Public Schools is hosting a classified job fair in conjunction with the city of Norfolk at the Workforce Development Center for our classified and support staff. There will be onsite interviews, and this will be held Wednesday, May 23rd, from 10:00 AM to noon at the city of Norfolk's Workforce Development Center on East Little Creek Road. So we're recruiting the best to come and be part of the NPS family. And so, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boone. Any questions for Dr. Boone on the superintendent's report? All right, not at this time. So hearing done, we'll continue on with the agenda. A few weeks ago, as the school board, Dr. Boone and her team brought forward some work that's being done in our school systems around trauma-informed care, and as part of that, one of the features they came about was the use of music in dealing with trauma as a support system for teachers and staff, and just generally setting the mood for a positive learning environment. And so as the board, we spent the last couple of work sessions inviting individual students to come forward. We may even have a presentation by Reverend Haywood at some point, where we just have the opportunity to have a musical introduction. And so tonight, we are pleased to have Mr. Dante Brooks from Booker T. Washington High School, he's in the 12th grade, he has a scholarship to attend Norfolk State University. He's going to come forward accompanied by band director, Mr. Vincent Johnson, and they're going to provide a selection to us, and we're also pleased to see in the audience their principal, Dr. Stallings, as well as several members of the Booker T. alumni family. So we will have Booker T. Night tonight with a musical selection. So, come on now, you have to take the stage now, you know? You gotta come get your applause. Oh, is that what it is? Okay. Oh, is that what you do? Oh, okay, well encore then. No, we just wanted to, first of all, thank you again for that selection, I think Lean On Me is perfect for a school board meeting. And, but just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you'd just like to, you know, say a few words about your work, your career, and your next moves, and also, you too, Mr. Johnson, has, you know, had the opportunity to watch you work with these students over the years, and we know the great work that you do, so just want to provide both of you an opportunity to just offer any additional comments if you'd like to.
I am a senior at Booker T. Washington High School. I am currently in entrepreneur program where I plan to start my business up very soon. Also, I plan to attend Norfolk State University to major in sports administration. My plan is to be an athletic director while running my business also. Mama always taught me have a main job and hustle.
There you go.
And I'm also vice president of SCA, Student Council Association, at Booker T. Washington High School, and I'm very active with the senior class as well.
Thank you very much and congratulations on all your hard work and success.
I'd just like to say it's a privilege to become and support my student. He is a great student, a great asset to Booker T. Washington High School band, and he has been a great part of my jazz ensemble.
Yes.
Mr. Joyner, you have seen him around, so I am very happy to be here with him, so he has a great future ahead of him. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Just before you all leave, again, I want to echo everything Mr. Jordan has said, and one of my favorite jazz musicians out of New Orleans is Trombone Shorty, so keep doing what you're doing, okay? All right, thank you.
I'd like to thank them again, and as Mr. Johnson mentioned, if you haven't had a chance to watch and observe the Booker T. Washington Jazz Ensemble, they are an excellent, there's a program over at Ruffner not too long ago when they were appearing with professional musicians, and they just booted professional musicians off the stage, so they are excellent, and we thank them again for coming out tonight. We will proceed on with our agenda, next we have citizens' comments on agenda and non-agenda items, keeping with the Lean On Me theme. And so we invite you to come to the microphone, you'll have three minutes to share with the board, anything that you would like to share, we do ask if you are in any way associated with Norfolk Public Schools that you take the opportunity to share that with us, you may state your position, give facts, other relevant data, if there are individuals with you that you would like to have standing and recognized, feel free to do that. If you have any written statements, you may give those to Mr. Butts the Kirk, and we don't give comments at time of citizen's comment, but we are always committed to listening to what the public has to share with us as your representatives. With that, we will proceed on. Mr. Butts, if you would, call the first speaker.
So Mr. Chairman and school board members, we have a total of nine speakers. The first is Mr. Stephen Dolly to be followed by Edna Joyner. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Dolly, I live in Lindenwood on West Avenue. I am a member of the Lindenwood Cottage Heights Barrow Park Civic League, and my main reason for being here tonight is to, I'm in support of interim principal Dennis Holland over at Lindenwood Elementary. As in my role as with the Civic League, I'm on the beautification committee, and he has allowed us and helped us to come to the school and plant seedlings with the youngsters and also help the teachers out with certain projects that they are trying to get done. So he's really supported a community engagement piece with, between the Civic League and the elementary school. We believe that the elementary school is the epicenter of our neighborhood, so we want to do our best to try to get in there and make it as best as possible. And the second thing I wanted to mention was the meeting at the Slover Library on May 22nd. And the second thing I wanted to mention was the meeting at the Slover Library on May 22nd for the proposed solid waste facility that will be going into the Old Globe Iron Facility. There is a school not even a couple of blocks away from that facility. It's just not a place that we would want to have a waste facility. So 7:00 PM, May 22nd, at the Slover Library, please, as a community, turn up and let these people know that this is not what we want to go in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, all. Do you all want to stand? My name is Doritha Winfield Joyner. Proudly I stand before you as a 1968 graduate of Booker T. Washington High School, a member of the Concerned Citizens of Booker T. Washington High School, a Booker T. Washington High School PTA member, and a registered voter of Virginia. Per your request, Mr. Jordan, the Concerned Citizens have sent you a resolution about our beloved alma mater, so that we will be assured of the preservation of its history. It is still our concern that it will be removed or diluted as the city and the school board continues to move forward with its educational and city planning projects. It is our hope that all students will have an opportunity to participate in this new endeavor, and that equity will prevail and will not be contained on one side. In the interest of transparency, the resolution reads, "By the School Board of the City of Norfolk, whereas the name of Booker T. Washington High School was named in honor of Booker Talafaro Washington, who was an outstanding African-American educator, author, orator, and advisor to presidents of the United States. And whereas Booker T. Washington High School for decades was Norfolk's only African-American high school and Virginia's first accredited public high school that African-American students could attend. And whereas Booker T. Washington High School Norfolk, Virginia, whose inception goes back to 1883, was founded in 1911 and is the only high school or historic landmark in the Tidewater area bearing the honorable name of Booker Talafaro Washington. And whereas Booker T. Washington High School Norfolk, Virginia, against all biases and obstacles, has evolved into an accredited, highly respected educational institution that serves a diverse student population. And whereas, this proposal has the endorsement of the alumni, community, and students. Now, therefore be it resolved on May 16th that the School Board of the City of Norfolk will hereby forever develop educational programs that address the needs of a diverse student population at Booker T. Washington High School, and be it further resolved on May 16th, 2018, that the School Board of the City of Norfolk will hereby forever protect and preserve the location and in its purest form, the historic name. May the mighty Booker say, Booker T. Washington High School. Thank you."
Next, we have Cecil Myrick, followed by Vivian Monroe Hester. Cecil Myrick.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, and participants in the audience. My name is Cecil Myrick. I'm a resident of Norfolk, a proud member of the Concerned Citizens of Booker T. Washington High School, and a graduate of the 1961 graduating class of Booker T. Washington High School. I'm back before you this evening in hopes of securing some answers to some of the questions that have been left... That has left me and others wondering just what is in store for Booker T. Washington High School. We now know that you have spoken of the STEAM and the CTE programs coming to Booker T., but no one has given any specifics as to when. It is slated to be in place and fully operational. Is that by September of 2018? If so, again, we ask, what is the curriculum? Are there teachers in place for these specific programs and ready and set to start? Has the date and time been set to notify the public of these programs that are now at Booker T.? And what about the specialized equipment and classroom need for these programs? These are just a few of the questions. And these new programs set for Booker T. brings new concerns about the feeder schools. And look at the present accreditation standings of the middle school and elementary schools that are feeders in Booker T. The future does not look too bright. Are these young people receiving instructions in the subjects that are necessary to ensure their readiness to qualify and be accepted into these programs when this time comes? In the past, money has always been a sticking point for upholding progress. Is money a problem at this time? I am understanding that Lake Taylor High School has already deemed the place the school for the CTE program and to start in September 2018. Will that money be used now to get Booker T. ready for the STEAM and CTE programs for September of this year? Speaking of money, does that mean now that the projects that were not completed at Booker T. last summer can now be completed this year so that the School of the Arts program at Booker T. will be fully funded and operational for September 2018? Our students are still without track fields, baseball diamond, dugouts, tennis courts, and playing home games on other people's turf is not really a home game. All of this may sound a bit repetitious, and it is, and most probable will be for quite a while. I would like to thank you for what you have done to help us at our beloved Booker T. Washington High School, and thank you for your time and attention this evening. And I would just like to add one more thing. With proper funding for that school of the arts that's known as Booker T. Washington High School, you got a good example this evening from the instrumental program that we just had. If we can get the funding for the equipment that we need at Booker T., you see what can come out as a product.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Monroe Hester. Mr. Chair and Madam Superintendent, I would like to thank you for receiving the Concerned Citizens of Booker T. Washington High School. We are here to support our mission, and that mission is to serve as a volunteer partnership to aid and support in the efforts of the student and staff of Booker T. Washington High School to remain accredited. This has been our mission, and it continues to this day. As a body, we have heard that plans are underway for new and exciting programs for Booker T. Washington, but you have not planned any information sessions for our community, parents, and students. How do you justify leaving these... We have seen a different process for the Maori community. Where is the equity, equality in the services? We have also been told that the new programs will have updated technology, special staffing, and community partners. However, you have not shown us the proposed curriculum, and we've asked for this and have not received it. Also, you have not finished addressing the issues that we brought before you last summer, last year. The small amount of money spent on Booker T. Washington last summer was well overdue, and we expect to see construction and renovation again this summer, because there are still things that need to be done. The athletic and arts programs are still not up to 21st century standards. You know what it takes to build a strong educational program. We've seen it in other schools. Why has Booker T. Washington been disrespected in that regard? As members of the school board, the community put you here to work for all children, and we need you to put children first. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mary Simpson-Jonesby, followed by Martha Demond Pelear.
My name is Mary Simpson-Jones. I live in the city of Norfolk. I have a niece who attends Rosemount. It's amazing that we hear a song, "Lean on Me." The only person I can lean on is God, because there is no respect or ethics, as Governor Northing was trying to do, was trying to say. When I was employed at Norfolk Public School, on May 3rd, I went to Norview Middle School. And up on the wall, there were a picture of Noel Gabrielle that was posted by the teacher's wall. Also, being a head start worker in the play area, there was a toaster. They should have had a covering over it, no. From my point of view, and with the human resource person, the principal should be accounted for, because she is the one to govern the school. And the person who I was substituting that day, she was out there campaigning for Ms. Gabrielle. I have pictures here for the superintendent and for the school board, and I have it on video, and so the man could only print. But have no reason to lie, lie at all. And you can tell Mr. Pisco, he will be getting a subpoena for the human resource person, for the teachers who lied and fabricated on me. Also, school board members, and the new ones who may be coming aboard, Dr. Boone did not communicate with you all. I looked at your job description. And she did not communicate with y'all, because some of my concerns had never been. She did not call you. And with what I went through, whether they could do something or not, she gave me a concern that Dr. Woodin was looking at it, and then here I come getting some say bam. So it was like a fabricating thing, but God saw me through this. And I will be an advocate of the God and to write things for Norfolk Public School. Ms. Dole, congratulations on your step going to city council. You have big shoes to fill. Dr. Whibley, who was the chairperson, and I hope that I could see you in that aspect, doing more than just sitting there. I can't tell what you do now, but I do go to city council. And I would like some actions to be taken, and I would like for it to be known to me. Or, as usual, I'll do the thing for to get answers back. I'll hand these to Mr. Sherman, and therefore that.
Thank you.
School board members, can you hear me? I'm Martha Demond Pelear. I've been the media specialist at Camp Allen Elementary for the past five years. I've taught for 36 years. 24 of those years have been with Norfolk Public Schools. I've lived in Norfolk for 46 years and sent my two children to Norfolk Public Schools. I've chosen to come before you today because of the way I've been treated all five years by Camp Allen's principal, Mrs. Deana Copeland. I have been accused, judged, and found guilty in various instances without the principal ever allowing me a defense and without naming my accuser. I have been badgered, bullied, and spoken to so disrespectfully in her office that I had a union member accompany me to every future meeting as a witness. She has humiliated me in front of students and fellow teachers. She has held a kangaroo court on me, holding me accountable for wrongdoings of which I was totally innocent. When it came time to fill out the school climate survey the first year I was at Camp Allen, I took advantage of the comments section and wrote, "Administrators should not demean, insult, and humiliate their staff members." The next day, Ms. Copeland called me into her office to inform me that she recognized my handwriting. The climate surveys are supposed to be anonymous. I met with Dr. Patricia Melisi after that, who was then Executive Director of Elementary Schools, and reported the unethical breach of confidentiality. I have had a target on my back ever since. The next two years, staff members had to fill out the climate survey in the main office with Mrs. Copeland present. She has told me that she has gone into my school email. "The climate at Camp Allen is one of fear. I was punished for meeting with Dr. Melisi. My class load increased from 10 classes a week to 18 a week. Mrs. Copeland's body language, affect and tone of voice are scornful and hostile when talking to me. I go to work every day wondering what terrible things she will do to me today." After five years of being treated disrespectfully and hostilely by Mrs. Copeland, I called Mr. Calhoun from the Norfolk Federation of Teachers, who has listened to my concerns and cares that teachers are mistreated by administrators. Three weeks ago, I was teaching a fourth grade class in the media center. Mrs. Copeland came in and said in front of the class that I was teaching a third grade SOL. When I told her I could show her in the reading pacing guide that it was indeed a fourth grade SOL, she replied, "Mrs. Demond Pelear, I don't care to hear anything you have to say," in front of the entire class. She admonished me recently for sending a student back to his class from the library without him obtaining a book. When I asked if I could defend my decision, she said no, because I will say she was bullying me, and she walked off. Her harassment has made my job very difficult and has definitely weakened the media program at Camp Allen. On the first day of my personal leave, May 4th, Mrs. Copeland texted me four times saying she couldn't find my lesson plans. I told her where they were after the first text. She answered four more times and she couldn't find them. When I returned from my personal leave, I found those lesson plans just where I said they would be. I can't help but think the texts were aimed at ruining my personal day. I have many more stories to tell, but only have three minutes. Please place a value on how administrators treat their staff. Character counts above all else.
Next, we have Thomas Calhoun, to be followed by Philip Hawkins, Jr.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on these things and try to show two examples, if I have time, of what she's talking about. In front of you, you have a letter of concern that she was given on May 3rd, 2018. I highlighted some things that are very important. I want you to see, because I'm going to go over them. You see absences without approval, a whole list of them, slash unscheduled. You don't have the...
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Calhoun, we have enough copies.
Okay. Let's draw your attention to absences without approval, unscheduled. Unscheduled has nothing, zero, to do with whether absence is approved or not. Nothing. That is totally up to the principal. And I'm going to show you that on the other page. But I want you to see these dates, starting 9/13/17, the first day she was absent. You see it on the absence without approval list, all the way up through April. Every day, every minute, she was sick, unapproved. It's right there in front of you. I'm harking back to the date. This was done on May 3rd, not during the year, May 3rd, this month. She went back every whole day, every... Some of them were two hours. Look at them, unapproved. Family sickness, unapproved. Personal sickness, unapproved. She uses this code down here, and since she's going to use it... How about turning it to that page for me, and let's see what it says? She left a note there, but she only left one. There's more here. So you see the 3.6 days, so you missed more than that, so you get a letter of concern. Let's look at B. Unscheduled leave is defined as an absence for which approval was not granted at least 48 hours ahead. Don't make no difference what it was, if it happened, 48 hours inside of that. It's simply here according to this, unscheduled. Nowhere there does it say it's unapproved. Nowhere. And nowhere in this code does it say, if you have an unscheduled absence, it's unapproved. And nowhere in this code does it say, if you have an unscheduled absence, it's unapproved, like you see on her first sheet. Watch the next sentence, the first, most important one. Supervisors ought to use discretion when an unscheduled absence is the result of an emergency or a situation outside employees' control that requires the use of sick leave or personal leave. Supervisors ought to use discretion. Every single minute she was sick, that she didn't give her 48 hours notice, is marked unapproved. Two questions. One, why? And two, is everybody at Camp Allen judged by this? If everybody there is judged according to this right here, she's wrong. Okay? If everybody is not judged by that, then she's being harassed. You have it there in front of you. You tell me what it is. On the exact same day, May 3rd, she was calling the office and told the sign from papers, tell her the story, because a student had made a complaint against her the exact same day, May 3rd. Think she grabbed about her arm in the library and pulled her... Okay. She filled out the paperwork, she went on about her business. Within 24 hours, that was reported to CPS. I talked to Dr. Gray. Ms. Gray, she thanked her directly, she said, "Well, it's the law. We have to report anything, any complaint within 24 hours." Okay, fine. Didn't sound right, I started asking more questions. I started emailing Ms. Gray. Because I said, "Who, you know, who, who lodged the complaint?" Chairman, I've emailed here. From one, the teacher says, I mean, the principal says, "Oh, student lodged it." And one from Ms. Gray says, "The parent caused it." I called downtown here, talked to some people down here, pupil personnel. Then I emailed Ms. Gray back. "Ms. Gray, did you report this to NPS?" Couple of emails went by now, so I said, "Ms. Gray, it's a yes or no question. Did you report the incident to Norfolk Public Schools?" We did to you, and I'm late, and I'm going to move on, sir. What she stated clearly, "After reviewing the statements, an internal NPS investigation was not requested." Statements didn't require her to anything, was anything they... They reported this lady to CPS, and didn't think it was important enough to report to NPS. Is that how we do things here? This is two examples. There are more. Came here tonight to ask for your help. I've asked before. Not getting the help. Don't know where else to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. School Board Chair, Mr. Rodney Jordan, Vice Chair, Dr. Gabriel, members of the Norfolk School Board, Dr. Boone, and District Leadership Team. My name is Philip Hawkins, Jr., and I reside at 3597 Mississippi Avenue in the Ingleside Community. I am the President of the Education Association of Norfolk, the EAN, the local affiliate of the Virginia Education Association and the National Education Association. I represent school employees of Norfolk Public Schools and the EAN. I am a proud pre-K teacher at the PB Young Senior Elementary School and a lifelong resident of the city of Norfolk. I am here again tonight, you've heard from me the last three months, about budget, and even though this is not about the budget, non-agenda, but it is always on the agenda. I am here again to speak regarding the needs for our district leaders at the local level, at the state level, and at the national level, to take a full stand in support of all public schools in Norfolk, starting with next year's budget. It is time that we all take a strong stand and say, "Enough is enough." And the children and the school employees of Norfolk Public Schools can wait no longer. Today, the Virginia Education Association, the VEA, took a stand across the Commonwealth of Virginia and every school district with collective action to join with North Carolina educators to mobilize state leaders in North Carolina. And we're doing the same here in Virginia by wearing red for public ed, for increased pay for teachers, and more school funding for all schools for next year and beyond. So, at this time, I would like to also say that the proposed amount of 3.3% is still not enough. We need to figure out how we can increase that amount so that all of our school employees can receive a living wage increase at all levels of the step and the step level increases of the new salary scale. So, with that being said, we would need you to support that initiative so that we do not lose our employees on June 15th. I am pleading with you because we know what happened last year, and we know it's going to happen again this year. There's a massive teacher shortage. Educators are leaving Norfolk. They're going to Chesapeake. They're going to Virginia Beach. They're going to Northern Virginia. And since 1990, Virginia's average teacher salaries have fallen from 18th to 34th in the nation, and we are now $9,200 below the national average. And when we account the locality in comparison to Northern Virginia, Virginia falls to 50th. So, North Carolina, 39th, 37th, we're right in that same range. So, this is a neighboring state. We need to pay attention to those statistics. And it's time for change, and it's time for us to get ready. We cannot stop, and we will not stop until we come together to make it happen for all of our students in Norfolk. We will stand with you on a budget that will help us. Please help all of us stay in Norfolk. We are still here because we want to be here. We choose to be here. Again, please help your workforce and your talented staff to stay here in Norfolk for our children before it is too late. Thank you for your service. Save our schools.
Our final speaker is Ms. Jacqueline Scott.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Norfolk School Board, your superintendent, and your chair. My name is Jacqueline Scott. I'm a resident of the city of Norfolk and a member of the Booger T. Washington Class of 1966 and the Concerned Citizens. As many local and national United States citizens know, the noted American born in slavery, Mr. Booger Taliferio Washington, was above all else an educator. Many of his distractors, as well as his supporters, have often felt that Mr. Washington was too dismissive of the conditions of blacks in America. But what was clear in all of his narratives was a need for persons, male and female, to be educated. While me, while we may debate his philosophy regarding the pathway for education, we should not be distracted by his mission, an educated population. I believe this is why so many schools throughout the country, in particular in the South, bear the name of this educator, Booger T. Washington. Let us acknowledge that this revered name was selected in many instances to pacify black citizens. At this time, no one is asking for pacification, but continued acknowledgement of an educator in the truest sense. An American born in slavery, seeking to be educated and in turn to educate. One may argue that all schools should bear the names of true heroes, those outstanding educators who sacrificed much to educate our children. If I were to write a letter to Mr. Washington today, I would inform him that he should be proud of this Norfolk school. As I entered Booger T. Washington this morning, morning as a volunteer proctor for the SOL testing, a young man walking well ahead of me waited for me and held the door for this 66th graduate. And as my shift was over, a young lady with a pleasant smile saluted me as I left the library with a declaration, "Have a great day." Per Mr. Booger Taliferio Washington, part of being truly educated is demonstrated in realizing when to demonstrate appropriate responses to social circumstances, as these young people did. My thanks to these two Washington High School students, and my thanks to their principal, and my thanks to you and the citizens of Norfolk for allowing me to make this presentation to you and listening. And I do appreciate the previous speakers as well. Good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that was our final speaker.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Butts. We will proceed to our next agenda item, which will be approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that school board members would like to have heard separately? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Dr. Gabriel. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Butts, if you would call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassine.
Aye.
Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Reverend Haywood.
Aye.
Dr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan.
Aye. Next item, 6.01, monthly financial report and quarterly grants update, Dr. Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. This evening, we have Mr. Ray Reyes, the Senior Director of Accounting, who will present the monthly financial reports for the months of March and April. Obviously, Ms. Ingram is not here this evening, so Mr. Reyes is going to stand in her stead this evening.
Welcome, Mr. Reyes.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Jordan, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. I will present the financial highlights for the month of March and April. For the month of March, revenue received for the year were $229.7 million. That is 70.6% of the total budget. That compares with 71.6% for the same time period in fiscal year 2017, and 73.8% for fiscal year 2016. The expenditures as of March 31st were $222 million, which is 68.3% of our budget. This compares with 71.6% for the same time period in fiscal year 2017, and 70.1% for fiscal year 2016. We have encumbrances totaling $4.6 million, and that is 1.4% of the total budget. A summary of budget transfers, $50,000 and greater for the period is attached. I believe you all have that. We also have a schedule that compares the current period to the prior fiscal year, and there are variances and explanations. It basically covers the same information that I just covered, but in a different format, and it's for the general fund and for child nutrition. And finally, for the month of April, we have the federal grant programs executive expenditure summary. It contains the beginning balances, the total expenses, and the money available within the grants. That is all for the month of March. If you don't have any questions, I'll continue to...
Pause for one moment, if you would. So, any questions on this portion of the report, Ms. Doyle?
This is the March report.
Yes.
Can you explain the journal transfer, $50,000 more, which is the special ed journal 1430?
Which...
If I'm looking at period nine, fiscal year 18, as of March 31st, 2018, budget transfers of $50,000 and above. It's a journal entry 1430, special ed at 16501.
Okay. The notification that we have here says it's to pay occupational services provided for the October 2017 to January 2018.
And if I may, Mr. Jordan, add a little more, add a little more context to that. One, you recall, we've talked around some of the challenges as it relates to hiring sometimes occupational physical therapy school psychologists. And so, based on some gaps that we had in field positions, we then have transferred these funds to cover the cost of the contract during that period to offset those needs.
I'm sorry, I can't get into the financial report. And what about the journal entry of the 18, 59 transportation, and then the next one, 1732?
Let me start while, while Mr. Reyes is going through. The educational planning services contract, you'll recall, we, the board approved the contract last June. The scope of the work expanded, and so these were funds to cover the remaining costs of the contract with cooperative strategies. As far as, as transportation, you will recall that we had to do certain bus inspections. There, there was information that went out. And so, again, because of savings in some of these areas, we were able to move those into the cost for staff overtime and supplies and everything that was needed, that were needed to conduct the inspections, as well as general supply needs for transportation.
Okay.
Any additional questions at this time on the March reports we've received thus far? All right, Mr. Reyes, if you would proceed.
Okay. In the month of April, the year-to-date revenue has been $255 million, which is 78.4% of the total budget. This compares with 79.5% for the same period in fiscal year 2017, and 81.5% in fiscal year 2016. The expenditures as of April 30th were $246.9 million, or 75.9% of the budget. This compares with 79.4% for the same time period in fiscal year 2017, and 82.4% for fiscal year 2016. We have encumbrances of $3.8 million, or 1.2 million of the total budget. And again, we have summary of budget transfers, $50,000 and greater for the period attached.
Can I ask a question? So, the budget transfer of 1228, is that a one-time expenditure, and then it's an ongoing licensure fee after that?
That's correct. That's correct. And that's for our, the district taking over the, the background investigation software for volunteers and mentors.
So, it's a one-time acquisition implementation, then ongoing licensure fee?
Yes.
I attach us also a schedule that shows the variances between the current period and the same period last year, and the explanations of the variances. And the same is for child nutrition. Is the same information that I just covered, only in a different format. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. In case you have any other questions concerning period 10, April.
Other questions or comments?
I have questions about the state grant and the federal grants when we get there.
Okay. Would you like to review the, the state and federal grant report?
Okay. I will try to answer your question. If not, I'll get back with you.
And, and I'll punt where I know.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Which, which, you just...
So, let's look at the state grants, year-to-date, March 31st, 2018, budget to actual. And if you look at the state-operated programs, remaining available balance relative to the closing date, was it because we didn't spend, therefore you don't?
You, you're in the state one... Okay, I clicked on federal. Let me go back and get in state. Give me just a minute. Now, this is state-operated programs.
You're in the first row?
Correct.
Look at the program closing date for that. March 31st was the closing date, so there were encumbrances noted for that. You will recall that our state-operated programs don't run on the July to June fiscal year, nor do they run on... nor do they run on the federal fiscal year of October through September. They instead run on a fiscal year of April to March. And no rhyme or reason for it, but that's the way in which the state-operated programs run. So what you see here represents the remaining balances. That was as of the time that they completed the report. Chances are, once they reconcile in the next quarter, you'll see that as zero. Most of this is probably salaries that deal with the staff for those programs. Norfolk Public Schools is essentially the fiscal agent for this. The state sets the budgets. They utilize our staffing models in terms of salary schedules and all of that. But the funding, those programs are designed to be self-sufficient. Well, self-sustaining based on the state grants. You'll recall, I think it was last year, there were a couple of positions we shared with the board that were being reduced out of those programs, but that was based on the state grant funding. And therefore, I did not make a recommendation at that time to the board that we absorb those positions, because they are state-funded programs, and they need to be funded at the level they needed for the support. But they are on a totally different fiscal year. So when this closed out, there are still some, most of this may be left in salaries, and that would have played out by the next.
Report.
Yes.
So can we just follow up on that to make sure?
Yeah, the next quarter, yeah, we definitely will follow up, and then we'll show where that rests.
Okay. Federal grants? The next report, federal grants, budget to actual, March 31st, 2018. My question here, there are some closure dates of June 30th, 2018, and there's still some remaining balances, like adult basic education. Are we clear and certain that we're going to be spending that money?
Remember, this is a closeout, this is as of March 30th.
Right, no, I know.
And so, we still have three months in the fiscal year. Yes, we will be expending these funds per the program requirements and submitting for the appropriate reimbursements for those. You also will note within these that, as the board has seen historically, there are some carryover funds annually. And what happens to those carryover funds, we try to expend those first, because they sunset first. As part of the work that we're doing and some of the information that we'll be gathering through the Council of Great City Schools, we will be coming to the board around, with some concepts around how we restructure, supporting grants, and how we deliver grants. But again, we're on target to use these funds.
We just want to make sure that we can and use them in, you know, appropriate fashion and spend the money that is on the table to be spent.
Absolutely, and I think as the board knows from my leadership, I'm not one of those to go and we just spend things because we're at the end of the grant. We strategically make the selections of what the grants are for, and that's how we expend them.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, so let's do this, because we actually went through six zero one and also six zero two. So if we can go back for a moment to six zero one. If there's a motion to approve the financial reports and the quarterly federal and grant, federal and state grant budget actual reports that we have before us for item six dot one, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the financial report six dot oh one.
For the month of March.
For the month of March.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All right, moved by Ms. Bassin, seconded by Reverend Haywood. Any additional discussion on six dot zero one, monthly financial reports for the month of March? Hearing none, Mr. Butts, if you would call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassin.
Aye.
Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Reverend Haywood.
Aye.
Dr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan.
Aye. Then proceeding on to item six dot two, which are the monthly financial reports for April. Is there a motion to approve and accept those financial reports for the month of April?
I move that we accept and approve the monthly financial for April.
Moved by Dr. Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Gabriel. Any further discussion on the April monthly financial report in the motion before us? All right, hearing none, Mr. Butts, if you would call the roll for that, please.
Ms. Bassin.
Aye.
Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Reverend Haywood.
Aye.
Dr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan.
Aye.
I do have the response to Ms. Doyle's question about the state-operated programs. Those are actually reimbursed based on actuals. So those programs did not spend all of those monies. The original amounts that were allocated, again, their budget and everything is approved with the state. We are the fiscal agent for it. And so, the total reimbursements were less those amounts on the sheet.
And that is the same for the jail assistance grants?
Yes. Again, those are state-operated programs, so.
Okay. And is that also the race to the GED? I know that's not due for another 15 or so days, but.
No, that's not a state-operated program, it's a state grant, but not a state operator.
So we're expecting to spend that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Next on our agenda is a resolution associated with later high school start times. We're having a little technology difficulties up here, so I want to make sure that we have the resolution before us. But, Dr. Boone, do you have any comments? Otherwise, I'm going to proceed to Ms. Bassin, who is the author of the resolution, and just like to provide the board with another recap of the resolution before us.
The only comments I would like to make is go back to the discussion we just had during the workshop. And we were talking about what are options around transportation and everything that in improving efficiencies with some of our transportation, we also could gain the collateral impact of later high school start times. But again, the resolution that the board is entertaining is for us to examine the work around this. I don't want anybody to leave to say that we're changing it for the next school year. Nothing changes for next school year. But again, it's the idea of a study that the board is asking us to look at and not pulling the research on whether or not late start times make a difference in particularly with our older students, but what would, how would we facilitate this if it's the board's direction going forward?
And let me just add, if you're able to, inside of Board Docs, to go back to the May 2nd work session, under Matters of the Board, the draft of the resolution that we discussed at the last work session is there. More than willing to read that if it's needed. We discussed it, I think, for a couple of work sessions now.
Can I go ahead and make a motion to approve that resolution?
Be pleased.
Then we can bring it into discussion.
Be pleased to accept your motion.
I would like to move that we approve the resolution presented on examining the start times for the secondary students.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, then the floor is open for additional discussion. Ms. Bassin.
Okay. Thank you. So the resolution, as Dr. Boone just mentioned, is for the division or to direct the superintendent to address issues around implementation of later start times for our high school students, which would include a cost-benefit analysis, a community engagement to seek feedback, and also to review how, you know, the logistics around it. So we have talked about it for the last, I think, couple of work sessions, and, you know, we've had discussion over the last couple of years about it, and the benefits are clear. So this is a resolution to really get into the implementation of it. And again, as Dr. Boone said, not for implementation this 2018 school year, but hopefully 2019, 20, we could see some change on that. So I appreciate the board's attention around it, and Dr. Boone's as well, and the district leadership team.
Any other comments or question on the resolution? So, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Robinson?
And the reason why I support this resolution, because it fits in with the overall arching, master facilities planning process that we are doing. So I am interested to get the feedback from the administration on the implementation.
Others? So one of the things, Mr. Butts, we can do is to make sure that we upload the resolution to Board Docs, the draft associated with this item. I will, just for the sake of the record, tonight, just read the "Be it resolved" portion so that we can be clear to back up what's just been discussed. And so, "It is therefore be resolved that because of the benefits to student health, well-being, and academic performance, it is a goal of the School Board of Norfolk Public Schools to achieve high school start times no later than 8:30 a.m., so that students are able to," I'm sorry, no earlier. Work with me. I appreciate that. "than 8:30 a.m., so that students are able to obtain a sufficient amount of sleep, which I need, as defined by sleep research and medical experts. Be it further resolved that the School Board of Norfolk Public Schools direct the superintendent to present information and a recommendation to the board regarding later start times. Relevant information includes best practices in school divisions that start high schools no earlier than 8:30 a.m., including but not limited to Fairfax City, Arlington County, Chesapeake City, Loudoun County, Virginia, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Seattle, Washington. Feedback from internal and external stakeholders, specifically students, parents, caregivers, and teachers, and cost-benefit analysis. Be it further resolved that the superintendent shall propose a draft framework for implementation to the School Board no later than the first board meeting in October 2018. The results of the analysis, community feedback, and a potential implementation plan shall be presented to the Board for action in the December 2018 timeframe." So, any other discussion, comments, or questions on the resolution?
I like it.
Please, Arturo.
Yeah, this, like, that's one thing that I did, I can really appreciate this, because I know I spoke with a lot of students at my school, and I did speak with a lot of students within NPS about this, and so, a lot of them were in support of being able to wake up a little later, because we're tired. Thank you for considering this for everyone else, even though, like, I won't be here next year. I'm sure everyone else will appreciate this very much, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Arturo. Anything else? All right, hearing none, Mr. Butts, if you would call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassin.
Aye.
Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Reverend Haywood.
Aye.
Dr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan.
Aye.
All right, last item, we have Matters of the Board, and don't know what others have, anything they'd like to bring forward, but Arturo, I will start with you. If there's any updates or any items you'd like to bring forward to the board at this time, and we'll just come down.
There is nothing at this time, thank you.
Well, we thank you, and we congratulate, correct, congratulate you on your acceptance and scholarship to Stanford. We're very proud of you and the work that you're doing. Yeah. Ms. Wagner, anything at this time?
I will email you my concerns.
Okay, all right. Ms. Doyle?
Arturo, I commend you on your next journey in life, going to Stanford. I think that's great, and I'm thrilled for the Booker T. senior who's going to NSU. I think that's absolutely fabulous. I love to see the students be highlighted like we are, so I really appreciate that. And Arturo, you know, people need to know that you're going to Stanford on a four-year scholarship, which is absolutely fabulous. So I commend you and your family for their great support of your good work. So hang in there until graduation. Thanks, that's it.
Reverend Haywood, anything at this time?
I have no comments.
Dr. Gabriel?
Just to Arturo and the other young man from Booker T., don't forget to come back and tell the other students your good experience and praise your teachers as a just-completed teacher appreciation week. We're very proud of them. I'm very excited about the resolution for the later start times and the work that we just heard about in our work session. I do have a question, though, about the resolution that the members of the concerned citizens brought forward. I guess if we can talk about that at some point.
I'm gonna.
To figure out how we're gonna.
I'll speak to it in my comments.
Work on that, okay.
Ms. Bassin?
I too congratulate you, Arturo, on all of your hard work and also of the board. We do have some time left for this current board, and, you know, as we're, I think, leading into leaving, I want us to also think about any policies that we need to address or that are pressing for this current board to address. We are having our policy committee meeting tomorrow morning. We will have one more after tomorrow before the new board begins their work. So I'd like to hear from all of you about policies that you think that we need to address currently. One in particular that I know has been discussed among the policy committee, I think, for a while. We haven't addressed it fully, but I want to bring this to the full board. But it is under our School Board Governance and Operations, and I'm sorry, I can't access my Board Docs, but I'm going to do my best here. But the, it's under, it's B.
You can just describe it.
Yeah, yeah. But our advisory committees' policy, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about conflict of interests, and specifically, it's BBFA, Policy BBFA. And the particular section around, we've talked about family members serving. We've had a couple of, you know, husband-and-wife pairs, parent and child, and so, I would like to have a discussion about family members serving on the advisory committees and whether they have voting capability, if each member has a voting capacity, as well as members of the School Board. Because that, to be, you know, to have all of our policies in alignment with one another, I think that's important as well. So I'd like for us to have some discussion about it, or for you all to think about it for our June 6th work session, I believe, right, Mr. Jordan? Well, we could talk about it there. But just please talk about, I mean, think about what your thoughts are around that so that we can discuss on June 6th. And that's it.
Dr. Robinson?
I would like to thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. And Arturo, I'm going to join in the congratulations to you and your family. Your parents are very glad that you won that full-ride scholarship. I would like to draw your attention to the U.S. News &amp; World's report, ratings of the high schools in the country, in the Commonwealth. Three of our high schools, Maury, Norview, and Granby, are ranked in the top 10 in the nation. Their, three of them are in the top 12 of the region. And I share Dr. Boone's hope and wish that all of our five high schools will be in that same determination as soon as humanly possible. But we spend so much time dealing with the challenges and the troubles that we have in Norfolk Public Schools, and we have to circle back and revisit the accomplishments and the good things that we've achieved on a day-to-day basis. And it's due to, from the bottom up, from the students to the faculty, to the administration, and our superintendent. And it's been a pleasure watching this process, and I look forward to continued improvement. Thank you.
All right, so last, I just want to bring the board back to a couple of items that we've talked about. Number one, for the May 30th meeting, holding that date for a 4:00 p.m. meeting for us to come together as a called meeting to hopefully be in a position to address and approve the final budget for the year. We know that council right now is prepared to act on its budget on May 22nd, or at least that week. We'll be coming together on May 30th. Gives the administration an opportunity to address what comes out of the city council's action. Much of that goes to much of what we've heard tonight regarding raises and capital improvement and transportation, all the things that we've discussed over the last several months and weeks related to the budget. So the School Board will meet Wednesday, May 30th, at 4:00 p.m. to act on the budget, and it's possible could be. and it's possible could be another item there, but specifically right now, to act on the budget. Also, um, uh, Dr. Gabriel just asked, and, uh, we heard earlier today regarding a, uh, resolution associated with, uh, uh, the naming, or the current name and continuing naming of, uh, Booker T. Washington High School. I shared with you all an email, uh, yesterday, that, uh, that will be part of our work session on, in June, June 6th. Uh, Ms. Wagner has been working and did work with, uh, members of the community to come forward with a draft of the resolution that you heard tonight. I had asked her to send me a, a word version, because there's some comments I wanted to share back with her. She did send that to me, so we will be working, uh, together and as a team to bring that, uh, item forward for discussion at the June 6th, uh, work session, just as we worked with the resolution we just passed tonight regarding the, uh, the later start times. So, that'll be the process for that, so I just ask that the board, uh, continue to be diligent and, uh, look out for, uh, drafts that, that come forward with, with that resolution. Also, um, just wanted to mention that, uh, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, myself, uh, Ms. Goshen, Vice Mayor, City Manager, uh, members of the Greater Norfolk Corporation, and members of the city administration staff, we continued our steering committee meetings related to, uh, the Career and Technical Education High School. Uh, we are, uh, underway, working, uh, as a public-private partnership and collaboration associated with the decision that we made to move the school, uh, to, uh, Booker T. Washington High School. So, there are some things that are being worked, and, uh, as part of that meeting today, we talked again about, uh, as I said to you all this morning, that, uh, that I knew that our friends from Booker T. would be here, uh, talking about the name, and so we have discussed that repeatedly in our steering committee meetings, and the commitment, uh, remains for, uh, Booker T., and the recognition and the importance that, uh, Booker T. Washington has, not only as the history that you've heard tonight and have heard many times over, but also the significance of the role, as, uh, one of our speakers tonight spoke to in terms of, uh, Booker T. Washington's significance in education, and in particular, preparing, uh, the future workforce for entrepreneurship, as well as, uh, academic and, uh, and other work, workforce development skills. So, we think that alignment is, uh, is right on. Uh, we do have the work session on June 6th. Also going to continue to work with the School Board members-elect. Uh, we had a agenda planning meeting a couple of weeks ago, and so we are working on, not only as we transition in July with the new school board, to have, uh, uh, board training, but also to make sure that we can work on, uh, getting them through their legal process of making sure that they are, uh, certified as, uh, School Board members to come to work on July 1, but also working with them on a ceremonial, uh, swearing-in as we've done in the past. So, all those things are, uh, are underway, in addition to preparing for graduations and, uh, uh, things we heard at the workshop tonight. So, we know it's this time of year with, uh, testing and graduations and proms and warm weather and, uh, all the great work that's happening, uh, in the division. So, I just want the, the board to know, and the public to know, that we are not losing sight of that work, as well as the, you know, concerns that we hear tonight, and concerns that we hear out in the community. And so, we will continue to move forward together and lean on each other towards, uh, Norfolk Public Schools being that proud cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. So, with that, uh, Dr. Boone, any final comments from you for the evening?
You touched on it, we are in the, in the middle, and initiated our SOL testing, and thanks to the volunteer proctor. Thank you. Uh, it does take all, all of the volunteer proctor, I thank you, I thank you. You know, for me, it's not about focusing on the test, it's about focusing on what the instruction looks like all year long, and then the test is just the, the cherry on the top of the sundae. And so, we, we know that we've had a very focused academic year, and we're looking forward to, to positive outcomes. And, um, just, just ask that you take that into consideration when you have needs. Some of our schools, the folks are kind of tied up do- doing proctoring and, and testing and, and doing lots of things. We are, we will be moving into our graduation season, um, in, in June, and our promotion exercises, and so, I think we have roughly four weeks of school left. Yeah, I think the last day of school is June 14th. I'm not counting, but we have about four weeks of school left. And so, uh, again, we, we thank everyone for the support and for the comments, and, you know, uh, rising tide flows all boats, and we're rising, so, thank you.
Uh, one, one point of clarity, Ms. Bassin, you said the policy committee is meeting tomorrow, is it tomorrow or Friday?
I mean, sorry, Friday.
Okay, it's, it's Friday, so if there's anything that you all like for the policy committee to consider, if you can get them to tomorrow, then they can consider it on Friday. Uh, any, anything else for the good? All right, we'll consider ourselves adjourned.